I live in East Compton, so I'm like. I don't have anything. But you know, at night, like how things are closing down, all the cars are leaving and we start climbing. I can see the water. One o'clock, two o'clock Saturday. It's even actually makes it happen. Yeah, it has. And that'd be me.
So there's like a, is there a real person there?
Oh, yeah, all the restaurants. And they're buying like here's. You see.
A lot of them. They let you wander us down the street and open.
You can do that anyway. Yeah, there's like a, yeah, there's versus signs. There's a limit, but as long as you're, yeah, as long as you're. Like a restaurant. You're good to go.
It is. It's not a play if they, but they need his hour. Their service.
Well, the city didn't suit it. It just kind of happened.
Yeah, it's why I grew up. Pass. Ross.
Yeah.
This is what Ross.
He knows that. Yeah, we were just talking about each other. I probably run across. On the little party day and all these things. You had to have laws. Probably family and the retail. And we haven't like in the planner forever.
You know, we, we, we chased it off. As we always did. We have forty seven or some stuff.
So make it work concept was the. What was the Walmart? Well, we figured out what he made. That is, that is definitely a thought.
Yeah, that's a cool project.
Yeah, it's cool. I mean, it's like it's kind of that corner and yeah, you get to.
Because. Scott and John. The abandoned, they were kind of on the highway. Yeah, against residential with. And yeah, I heard that just from the apartments across. But you've got a business.
We, we developed the retail across.
And we're very busy. People are curious.
No, it's right across from.
Well, it's back.
Well, yeah, but it's all for the chair and the marlins.
Yeah, I shouldn't.
Yeah, everybody.
All right.
Yeah, everybody. Yeah. We like to see.
Paul, how you doing? Good seeing.
Yeah, there's something in wording is how these they did the apartments. And then you have another group and you're giving this okay. We have another region. So you look, we did just the retail.
I don't, I, I didn't. So I, so I understand that that's.
Probably because we were chatting about the same.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, so you were, yeah.
That's a nice to love. It really is. It's next year's.
Almost.
Next thing on top of.
Like we got a writer about. Sure. I don't know. We were passing down. I sent him to the. Oh, that's. Been to parts in Jersey. Oh, it's really like. I don't know about it. Everyone's operating and all the restaurants are kind of like. Everyone's. But they gotta take it up. Yeah, we realize that is. That's. The. Oh, my God. Sniff Ken's son later. Smith calls me, he's like. Yeah, we, we brought a burger for you. Like, oh, it's like the heat. So much, so much heat. I was like, what? He was unbearable. It's like the worst thing I've ever seen in my life. I'm probably like, well, I wasn't there for that one. But that one was a cool deal. Wish I could do that.
I saw something like that. But once again, whatever. Oh, I got a big. And you know, it's twenty feet of.
Yeah. So that burns.
Yeah, they cut out. I had a kid. Or I don't want that. It's only one. A lot. You know, a nice car watching. You'll see never. On. So every time. Yeah, just have them go. And. Support.
And as. It's good. Yeah, you know, I would have been attached to. If you show it, it'd be a memorable gravel. He's with the, so he hit his powertrain. But that was good. And we completely filled it like ninety two. Set hard scrabble. Ross, Ross, Ross. Not well, no. Okay, what's their lake there at like? Aaron, he's like fishing at like. You're trying to develop it. Kind of like he is. About Mary. So he gave a rent. Oh, yeah. Yeah, like it was just. Yeah, so they go on the center.
They all lose.
So. They kind of. And they got the big state government. Yeah, so they come like. They got it. They didn't push it. And they had this. Kind of like that. Why I asked you about like. Need. And they moved. And then. The way. That was like. They didn't know. And so we go like, I know, I got a call. How much? He must be new to it. I was like, no. I said, this is going. You're ready to hear. No, no, no. It's all about the killer. It wasn't. I think. Yeah. Figure out that. Yeah, you should. Run around and see if they get away with this. Soon. That was. Things suck my mind. I can. Yes, you do. That doesn't. Maybe. Really. Then she. Everybody's. Those waters. Stick on the fire. Especially. You drink. On rocks. Frankly, it is. Long. Still on them. Better not go. But it was gonna take. Like that. And I thought. All this. He's on it. Pursue. For hours, right? I was kind of like. Oh, yeah. But I didn't do anything. I'll be there. I'll be there.
Yeah, it's an explosion.
Supposedly.
So they need.
They're all four. When I got over there. It's like, yeah. It's building self storage. It's phase two. Phase two to. What brand was it? You know, maybe like. I didn't pull it. So everything you're doing like. He still started. I'm like, you want. Didn't really. All I can do. I gotta get someone out there.
Well, there's. Don't go to the village. Come. No more fun. You know, that version. Of course. Hey, that's. Yes. And one. Maybe. I'm. Looks the intensity. Really. I believe the. Including. I have spent. Okay. Very.
Well, it's just where I've come. I think it's. If you. Try. That you get. Somebody else. Somebody else. You know, that. That's the. You know. That's what the service.
All right, everybody. Good evening. It's now six P M. I believe we're expecting one more commissioner to join us and we will welcome her when she comes. So we'll go ahead and call tonight's meeting of the planning commission to order. It's May the ninth, twenty twenty three at six P M. Thank you all for being here. At this time, we'll start from my right and go across and have roll call, please.
Elizabeth Shin.
Erica Harris.
Deb Cameron.
And I'm Thomas O'Brien, and as of now, we just barely have a quorum, but we do. So we're going to go ahead and push forward. First item of business is taking a look at the April eleventh, twenty twenty three minutes, and they're fairly substantial. Has everybody had a chance to, to look at them? And if so, do we have any amendments or is a motion ready? Did, could somebody please present a motion if you're ready to do so?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as submitted.
Okay, Commissioner Harris moved to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Shin seconded. Hearing a motion and a second, is there any debate or discussion? Seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor of approving the minutes or the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody. Do we have any organizational or procedural items that we need to discuss today? Anything? Welcome. Okay, hearing no organizational or procedural items to discuss, we will move to unfinished business. That's R Z twenty three dash zero one and Slep twenty three dash zero one regarding the request to rezone forty four seventy Shambly Dunwoodie Road. And Madeline, go ahead and step forward. That'd be great. Thank you.
Evening commissioners. I'll go ahead and give a brief update on this case. We are revisiting this from last month. It is for the self-storage facility at forty four seventy Shambly Dunwoodie Road. So to refresh everyone's memory, this property is currently zoned office institutional. It's not currently zoned to allow self-storage. And so the applicant has approached us and proposed a rezoning to the office distribution zoning district. But then additionally, they are also having to request a special land use permit due to the height limits that are very restrictive in the office distribution district. So currently, the maximum height there is two stories and they're asking to go up to four stories. And overall, on the right-hand side of the screen is what the proposed building would look like. All of the design and materials are in line with the intent for the Georgetown master plan area. And the building meets all of the standards for setbacks and lot coverage in the O dash D zoning district. So overall, from the last meeting, one thing that you all asked us to explore was our condition requiring the closure of the curb cut on the shopping center property after review with legal counsel and internally a staff. We do still see that as a good idea, but we have removed it as a condition of approval for this zoning action. And so overall, we still feel that it is compliant with all of the approval criteria. So none of that has changed. And again, overall, our conditions remain the same with the removal of that condition. And the applicant has also submitted a photometric plan, and I'm sorry I didn't include it in these slides. I forgot to, but that photometric plan does demonstrate compliance with our site lighting requirements. And that's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. I think we'll hear from the applicant and then we'll open it up for comment and questions.
Good evening, everyone. Din Webb, eleven oh five West Peachtree Street, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three oh nine, here on behalf of Cora Realty Advisors. As the last time, I've got Paul Ludwig and Adam Holland with me as well, ready and willing to take your questions. I'll be brief. I just want to touch on sort of the open items from last time. You heard that we did have conversation and consultation about the condition four, which has now been removed, so that's no longer an issue. There was a question about lighting. I've actually got a copy of this photometric plan here. So you can see that we are fully compliant with city light ordinance at the margins of the property. So I think we have hopefully resolved that issue as well. One last thing that came up last time, and I don't know that this is a follow-up item, but I thought I would address it. First of all, here is an image of just one, a comparable facility in the city of Roswell. This is actually an historic Roswell downtown. Gets you some perspective on lighting there. And this is the loading area that you saw on, I guess, the west side of the site. And I wanted to show that because I think we were talking about a loading dock last time. It's really not what we're talking about here. These are, you know, typical doors. You'd see those in a C V S down the street, right? These are typical commercial doors. That's what we're proposing here. This particular door on the west side will only lead to the basement, so only serves one store of the building. And again, the building closes at ten, so it's going to be the least used door and it will be, you know, not used after ten P M. So with that, I'll, I think I'll stop. Happy to take any questions you have. I'll ask that you ask to reserve my time and then ask for your recommendation of approval, subject to three staff conditions. Thanks.
All righty, thank you very much. At this time, it's typical that we go ahead and ask anybody in attendance who wishes to speak in for, for this. There, there are ten minutes to speak if you wish to step forward and provide any insight to us. Okay, and are there any? Hearing none, we will allow any of those against this to come speak with us at this point. I see none as well, so I think at this point, it probably makes sense to open us up for commission questions before, before we look to make a motion on this. So Commissioner Edmondson, we'll start to my right. Do you have any questions about what you've heard and seen?
Not right now. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Shin. Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Cameron. Okay, I'd like to go ahead and ask Madeline real quickly, if I might. With regard to, and I know we spent a lot of time talking about that curb cut. That was stricken after discussion with counsel. Is that due to the standing that we believe we do not have to request that as part of this? What was, what was the position of counsel? I understood it was stricken, but a little bit of why would be good.
Yeah, they, they were wary that there wasn't sufficient rational nexus between the request and for the zoning action and the request for the condition. So that was the reasoning there.
Okay, very good. All right, at this point, unless there are more questions, we'll certainly entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the application as amended.
Commissioner Cameron moved to approve the Slep. We, we need probably have to have two motions and votes. So if I could ask you to key that into first and then the second one, first being R Z twenty three dash oh one, second being Slep twenty three oh one. If I may ask you for, for one motion at a time and we'll vote twice, please.
And is that subject to staff conditions?
So, yeah, I'm, so I meant the amended staff conditions. So I'll just restate the whole thing. I move that we approve R Z two three dash zero one subject to staff conditions.
The amended staff.
The amended staff conditions.
Okay. All right, Commissioner Cameron has moved to approve subject to staff conditions, R Z twenty three dash oh one. Is there a second on that?
Second.
All right, Commissioner Shin seconded. At this time, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any debate? Hearing no debate or comment at this time, all in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Cameron, would you care to make a second motion, please?
Yes, I move that we approve S L U P twenty three dash zero one with amended staff conditions.
All right, Commissioner Cameron's moved to approve Slep twenty three dash oh one in accordance with updated staff conditions. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Commissioner Shin seconds. We've had a motion and a second. Is there any debate or comment about this? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. All right, at this time, we have new business to consider. That would be R Z twenty three dash zero two and Slep twenty three dash zero three. And some of this may look familiar.
Good evening again. I know this case will look familiar to Erica and Thomas. This came through a couple of years ago. So eighty four perimeter center east is asking for a rezoning and a special land use permit to modify the conditions from the previous zoning cases, R Z twenty dash oh three and Slep twenty dash oh two. And yes, I have mixed up those numbers every time I have typed them. So, but essentially, they are requesting to not amend their site plan, not change anything about the proposal. You know, for the built, you know, environment from that case from twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, they are requesting to only remove condition number twenty five. And condition number twenty five specified a timeline in which they were required to start land disturbance. And so based on that timeline, they would have, they currently need to start by September of this year, and that's not feasible. So again, the scope of this case is pretty narrow. We're just requesting to remove that condition. But I will give you a quick overview of the project overall, just so you're familiar with, with what we're, we're considering this evening. But essentially eighty four perimeter center east, I'm sure you're all familiar with it. It's the abandoned bank property that's across the street from the mall. It is currently zoned P C dash two. It's actually one of our very few properties in our perimeter center that is zoned, an actual perimeter center district. There's only a couple of them. And it's also located within the perimeter center character area and within the perimeter center overlay. It has gone through a series of zoning actions over the years since Dunwoodie Incorporated as a city and even under DeKalb County. And so over the years, it has evolved. And in twenty twenty one, a final plan, final plan was decided upon and voted on and approved to allow a maximum fourteen-story building with two hundred and twenty-five units of age-restricted rental housing. And then commercial uses such as retail and restaurants along Ashford Dunwoodie Road. And then there would also be an associated parking deck to serve the commercial retail and the residential components. And so overall, this is the site plan. The site plan is not changing. They're not proposing any major amendments. We're only looking at the request, which is to remove condition number twenty five. And again, that's solely related to the timeline. Overall, this timeline condition is extremely difficult to enforce. It reads as, you know, if the construction hasn't commenced by September of this year, then the zoning reverts back to what it previously was. And so there's a couple of logistical issues with that. First of all, we can't just automatically revert zoning back. We would have to go through another rezoning process to reestablish it as a commercial zoning district, C dash one, which is what it was previously. And that type of rezoning doesn't technically meet any of our criteria because it would actually be a step backwards. It doesn't meet our comprehensive plan. Having it zoned as a P C dash two zoning district is definitely in line with the vision that we have for the perimeter center and what they've specifically been entitled to through this zoning. Again, is compliant with that vision. And so any reversion back to one of our sort of older zoning districts, like the C one district, would be a real step backwards. And so, you know, we find that there are some logistical issues with this. And, you know, the timeline was meant to, because we've had this case in perimeter center where something gets approved, but then it doesn't get built for a really long time. But, you know, if you look at a project like High Street, they've had their entitlements literally since I was born. Uh huh, since the nineties. And now today, they're finally delivering this project, but it's completely in line with our vision for the future here. It's a great transit-oriented development. And, you know, regardless of how long it's taken to deliver, it still did deliver a good project. And so taking away those entitlements, you know, for something that, again, for this specific project, eighty four perimeter, you know, fitting our vision and meeting our goals for the perimeter center area does not make sense. And so as a result of this condition being number one impractical to enforce and also sort of contrary to the goals we're trying to accomplish here, we are not recommending any alternative condition. We're just recommending that the condition be completely removed. And all of the other conditions, all of the other, you know, twenty four, excuse me, twenty five conditions remain the same. And we just strike this condition. And so with that being said, I do have all of the conditions here listed for reference. I won't walk through all of them. They are pretty lengthy and complicated. But if you have questions, I, I have them up. But overall, we're recommending approval of this modification to the conditions. And if you guys have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you. Will the applicant be speaking?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is John Di Giovanni and I represent J S, J S J perimeter. I'll see the applicant. The Malinda, fantastic job. I know that. Much to that. The condition, as she mentioned, has a timeline where we were to submit a site plan or civil plan by March of this year, which we did. We met that condition. In addition, as she mentioned, there is a time, we have to commence site work by September of this year. The, the problem is the financial world has not been our friend over the last few months, as you can, as you may know. And it is delivered and created a hardship for us to meet that deadline. As you know, lenders are pausing most of their lending activity for the, for super future. And that is the primary condition for us requesting the, the removal of the special land use permit number twenty five. Now answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. We'll go ahead. Before we ask questions, we're going to go ahead and invite anybody who's here to speak in favor of this to come up if you're here. Will there be anybody seeing none? We'll go ahead and invite any of those against this change to come up. Hearing and seeing none at this time, I think it's, it's appropriate for Commissioner questions or comment. Are there any questions for staff or the applicant about this? Okay.
And so hitting pause, okay. Do you have an idea about when you would like to? Or, or is this going to turn into a high street development situation where ten years?
Well, there, there's really no telling. We, we don't perceive that to be a ten-year cycle. We do believe that the markets will start to correct themselves, in our opinion, towards the end of this year, beginning of twenty twenty four. So we do have equity and a construction lender that has seen the site, approved the site and pending a realignment of interest rates and other conditions, prepared to move forward.
Okay, Madeline, this is a question for you. Do we, are there conditions that speak generally? Was this a condition unique to the site? Or do we have conditions that generally apply to all projects that we approve, that they must start within X period of time?
With reasonings and special land use permits, this is not a common condition at all. I have not seen any others in the record. We do for our variances, which are a different type of request, and those are quasi-judicial process. We do have a timeline on those typically of two years to require commencement. But definitely not common practice with rezonings or special land use permits at all.
Could you help me understand why on variances, but not, I'm not so worried about the rezoning, but why not slops? Why the difference between variances and slops?
So for variances, Richard, would you mind speaking to the timeline conditions on variances?
We introduced it on variances because they were usually very specific cases, like encroaching into the stream bank buffer. If you wanted it, we wanted to encourage them to take advantage of that and not hold on to it and sell the property. And so it was more, more of that than anything else.
Okay. Um, I. My only concern in this, I mean, Madeline, to your point about High Street, is. in this, I mean, Madeline, to your point about High Street is, and this is something that one of the reasons why, and I understand markets and, but these open-ended timelines. One of the things that concerns me is in regards to High Street, we had these gazillion apartments sitting out there. Well, when are they going to be built? Well, do we approve this? Because here's another apartment complex coming our way. But we have High Street that's supposed to be building X number of apartments, but will they ever get built? And so at some point, my concern and and maybe, you know, Madeline or Richard, you could help alleviate this concern for me is by having something standing out there with, in this case, we're talking about restricted, age-restricted residential. It begs the question, as we have other people come our way, bringing age-restricted residential, well, we have two hundred twenty-five units sitting out there. When will it get built? And let's say this property doesn't get built and we approve, I don't know, let's pick a number, three other properties that build age-restricted. Are we overflowing a market with age-restricted? Or it it just makes it tricky. So, Richard, Madeline, how do you? Can you help me rectify that in my brain about how that should not be a concern?
So if it meets the comprehensive plan and the zoning request does that, ask you the question, how can you say no to it? Because the comprehensive plan is a guiding document and we're supposed to uphold that. So it all should be on the planning steering committee for planning.
Yeah, no, and and I think, and I hear that and I agree with that. I'm just wondering, again, when we have these again, going back to High Street, when we have these situations where we have that many apartments that we know are going to come online. It it was a discussion point over approving other apartments because we had the High Street standing out there. So is there a benefit to? Is there a benefit to moving the goalposts as we see necessary, or is it something where we just put it out there across our fingers? I don't, I would love your expert in history.
I don't feel that it's legal to put this condition on, and I am some of the council city council, excuse me, the counselors agree with me. But they said as long as the applicant agrees to it, then it's okay. So but Mal was right. If they did not move forward and they still had that condition on there, city has to file to rezone that property and he may not want to rezone. So puts us in an awkward situation.
No, that's a great point. So a follow-up question, then I'll be done, is if we remove this condition, could we add a condition with a timeline subject to not the rezoning, but the SLUP, for example?
Again, I don't believe it's legal, but if he agrees with it, you could ask him.
Okay.
Are there any other commissioner comments or questions for staff or the applicant? All right, hearing and seeing none, it would be appropriate to bring a motion. What's your pleasure?
Good at this.
Our Commissioner Cameron, let's again, please do, please do two motions, one for each.
Sure. So Madeline, I'm really sorry to call you out here, but which set of numbers is correct? There's one in the subject line and then there's one in the body of the request.
Yes, so the the proper number is going to be, sorry, let me just pull up the the first slide. I just don't want to get them confused because when it's literally the opposite, the twenty twenty-three.
Right.
And the twenty twenty numbers are are backwards. So it's R Z twenty-three dash oh two and SLUP twenty-three dash oh three.
All right, got it. I move that we approve R Z twenty-three dash zero, two as amended to remove the condition number twenty-five.
We comfortable with that motion as it's vocalized? Okay, is hearing a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Commissioner Harris seconds. We've got a motion and a second at this time. Is there any commission debate or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. The motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Cameron, if you please.
I would move that we approve SLUP twenty-three dash zero, three as amended to remove condition twenty-five.
Commissioner Cameron has made a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Harris seconds. We've got a motion and a second at this time. Is there any commission comment or debate? Seeing none, all in favor of approving this motion, raise your hand. All opposed, like sign. And it carries unanimously again. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. At this time, we would call staff to indicate whether there's any other business that we need to take up at this time. Seeing none, we'll push forward to public comment. Any members of the public wish to make a comment at the planning commission meeting tonight? Please come on forward, introduce yourself and share your address, if you please, and we'd love to hear you.
I'm Kimberly Simon and I live at two, five, three, seven Cherry Hill Lane. And we've been there twelve years. And it's been a great place to live and I know that the city council is trying to make improvements, which we all appreciate that. And it's good have updates and changes and new parks, the safety for the roads. I think that's great. And all those things are fantastic. And just wanted to mention an issue that I've brought up to some of your staff, which they've been very good, you know, great people. And I've spoken with Carl Thomas and Dale Harris. And they've made some great suggestions. They've made some adjustments. And Joe Secunder was very kind and came to our property to look at the water runoff situation. And at Cherry Hill, it's unusual. I mean, it sounds like Cherry Hill. It's one hill. It's two hills. So it's coming down Ison by the church parking lot and it's coming down Cherry Hill off of Peeler, which there's a lot of water runoff.
Which church? Could you be, sorry, which church?
Actually, it's my church. It's Prostrom Church. And actually, they do a lot of things at that church and volleyball, basketball, they try to, anyone, everyone, anyone and everyone is welcome. And they're trying to get people to use the church. So that's a great thing. And but we have a lot of runoff situation there that's gotten worse and over the twelve years. There's been adjustments to the culvert. And there's been some improvements on the culvert, but you, you know, I know Carl Thomas had said, you know, they can only do improvements for ten, ten feet from the culvert. And they put rocks there to kind of hold it. But the ditch, you know, all down the ditch is half on my property and half on Helen Smith's. And there's other people that that are adjacent to that property and behind us and next to Helen. There, the ditch is has massive water runoff through that culvert. They've tried to slow it with a pond, like a pooling effect. And we've, you know, we've tried to line the ditch with bricks. We're trying to do that to help. As, you know, homeowners, we are trying to help. And but at the end of the ditch, it is going straight down. I mean, it is just, there's a headcut coming across and all the ground is falling. And it is, there's a big hole back there. It's fixable now. It seems to be fixable now. If we do something now and I like put in, I mean, this is my opinion. I'm not, I'm not an engineer. But if we put in some storm pipes to direct that water where it should go, because it's not going where it should go. And it is dropping straight down and making a big hole. I'm concerned about safety for the community and it is you know, I, when you bring up problems, you want to bring up solutions. So, you know, the possible solution is that you you put in storm pipes like Tilly Mill because they had a water problem. And, you know, that would direct it where it should go. Or also in other places that have water management problems, when that county does have for your square footage of concrete, you know, your footprint, you pay a certain amount towards stormwater management, which would give you some funds to help manage the water. And in Louisiana, Houston, Texas, it's a major problem down there and they have to do the same thing. So that might be a solution. These are just things I've heard that might be a solution, you know, I'm not, I'm not an engineer. So but I just want to mention the path, you know, it's, it's, we like to walk. And there are people that walk on our street and that's great. That's fine. They want to take the path through Andover, in which behind Andover, that gulch keeps going behind Andover. There is a big gulch. I mean, it's a big one. So it's really major water runoff. It's not a problem that, you know, what stormwater management could solve. It's a big problem. It's a real big problem. It's not a problem that homeowners can really solve. And so, you know, if you take the path of Andover through the little cave, you know, we all like to walk through there. And you take it up Ison, that would be straight up Ison and then over to Tilly Mill. That would be, seems like that would be safer for bikers. You know, if you run bikers up Cherry Hill, there's a three sixty curve. And, you know, you can't see around the curve and bikers come pretty fast. That might, you know, that might be something to think about for your safety people. But it seemed like the homeowners, you know, we've done a little consensus and most of them think, you know, going up Ison would be a better alternative. And if you put the path in, you know, it seems like you, you know, I'm not telling you what you should do. It's to just throw in suggestions out there, recommendations, things to talk about. And it seems like you would try to solve the water runoff problem before you put a concrete twelve-foot of concrete up there because that's going to cause more water runoff. I mean, it's serious. It's a serious problem. And I'm happy to show it to anyone who wants to come out. I know Joe was kind to come out. And so also our houses, another thing that is concerning with you, but walkers are fine going up Cherry Hill, but bikers, we only have ninety feet in the front of our yards for parking, like for visitors. So, you know, we're always talking to our neighbors, oh, is it, can we park in front of your yard? Is that okay? I mean, we all, you know, try to get along and we're together well. And so, you know, it could be a situation with bikers coming up their car. I don't know. It's something to think about that Ison might be a better alternative. But I am concerned about Peeler and the twelve-foot path adding more concrete because concrete adds more water and water runoff. And it would be good if there could be a stormwater pipe to manage all that water. And those are my suggestions. And just in final, you know, I think changes like the path need to benefit all stakeholders. Future owners, I know you got to attract future owners. I understand that. And but also existing owners and fixing, you know, existing problems. I think both need to happen. That's just my opinion. And I just wanted to throw those suggestions out there to start a conversation.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comment at this time? Hearing none, we're going to move to commission comment and I'm going to take the opportunity to comment on the issue that we've just heard. Ms. Simon, I thank you for coming before the planning commission. Thank you for coming before the planning commission, Ms. Simon. I do want you to know, obviously, staff has heard your concerns and I think those are probably the most important ears to hear it at this time because the only issues that we take up in front of us are referred to us through staff and they're typically slups or rezoning. But important ears have heard it. To the extent we do encounter this, I assure you, we will consider what you've shared. And thank you for being here. And I would encourage you to share with council, too. Thank you. Understood. Thank you. And at this time, we're going to go ahead and move forward. Is there any other commission comment? Hearing no commission comment at this time, we will go ahead and adjourn. I want to thank you, everybody, for being here.